Really?
Okay.
Guys. Interesting. That probably adds a whole new layer to this.
All right.
Yeah. Hi. Yeah, you'd really like.
Were you ready? Welcome, City Council. We're here for our work session tonight. We're so glad to see everyone. We will excuse Chris Simonson, who is home not feeling very well this evening. So we're going to excuse him and we may later dismiss for at least a little while Campbell and for a family member. So anyway, we're glad that those of you are here in attendance. Welcome. Also, this is the 6:00 PM work session and we will, we're going to start right off by giving the time over to Gary Hill to discuss for a discussion with up to the... By the way, we welcome our Commissioner Randy Elliott and our Sheriff, our Deputy Sheriff, who is right behind you. We appreciate you both being here. Thanks. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please.
This topic's on the agenda at the request of you all of the council to talk a little bit about what efforts are being made around the B, what the concerns are, what can be done and what more can be done relative to some of the issues. We were all familiar with the issues around the B. And one of the great things about Boundless is that we're kind of nestled in the foothills. We have great access to the mountains. We have great access to public lands around us. Nearly all of us appreciate and enjoy that, but it creates challenges too, particularly for those who've, you know, made the decision to live close by. And there's challenges that come with that, particularly with sometimes traffic, sometimes with unlawful behavior that can happen and generally with, and sometimes with lawful behavior that can also happen on the property on the, in the foothills. And so some of the challenges that our residents are facing are a mix of all of these issues. Where all of us are familiar with the firearm incident that happened up there where a resident had a bullet go through his windshield, a very scary near miss. And it is, tends to be a consistent problem. Now, the B area itself is, as we know, is a kind of a focal point because it's a major access to that area. I would say that Farmington shares a similar problem on their end of that road. It's a little bit different because we have more of a neighborhood right at the base, but the same problems exist in the canyon on both sides and are largely, I'm not entirely, but I think entirely on both the Farmington side and the Boundless side are outside of Boundless City's jurisdiction. The city line starts at the, or ends at the parking lot near the B. So the parking lot itself is in county and then the road is all within county jurisdiction all the way over to the Farmington side. And so we have taken a lot of steps in the last several years to try and address the very complicated issues that we have up there with regards to private property, public property, jurisdiction, lawful behavior, unwanted lawful behavior as well as, which is challenging, as well as unwanted, unlawful behavior. And have made quite, I think, quite a bit of progress in pushing the ball along. It's unfortunate that it's not all visible at this point, but I think one of the major, for example, advantage or victories that we've had is working with the Forest Service to change their fire restrictions on Forest Service property within the county, within the city. But regardless of all the laws that we're able to pass, enforcement is still the key. I'm not entirely sure that we need additional laws. I think what we are looking for is better help from the Forest Service, hopefully, more help from the county and working together with them to enforce some of the ordinances that are already on the books. Working with the Forest Service is very challenging. For one thing, there are activities that are legal on Forest Service land that is not legal on unincorporated county property or within the city limits. And secondarily, the Forest Service simply doesn't provide very much money for enforcement. I think they have one ranger for the entire district, which is, I think, Twilla, Salt Lake and Davis County. They give Davis County a small amount of money, $15,000. That's, yeah, now, right? Yeah, before this year, it was... Oh, is that right? So the contract that we saw was incorrect, the 14,000. I see. So $7,000 a year for enforcement of Forest Service land in the county, which doesn't do much, as you know. And so tonight, I think we're here to talk a little about some of the issues that you've heard, to answer questions about the efforts that we're continuing to make and to see maybe what we can do together to continue to move the ball forward with some of these complicated issues. So with that, Mayor and Council, maybe I'll turn the time over to you to maybe ask questions. And we have about, we have about 20 minutes for this conversation before we need to move on, if you'd like to do that.
Council, if anyone that wants to discuss some new designs, welcome to do so.
Are there any county regulations restricting the use of firearms within a certain range of roads or Forest Service regulations?
There are both. I believe they all mirror one another. Got a little feedback. That's okay. See you, Francisco. So I know, and I believe in the city, I think it's 200 yards from a structure or a road, and maybe it's 200 feet. I'm going to look at our chief and our sheriff to answer those questions. Is it 200 feet or 200 yards? So for those that might be listening at home, what Chief Ross said was that you can't shoot across a road, you can't shoot in the direction of homes within a quarter of a mile. I'm pretty sure it is 200 feet from a structure or road.
So folks that are shooting at those switchbacks are technically in violation of that regulation?
They are. Yes.
What's the penalty for violating that law?
That I do not, I do not know.
Yes, the default is Class B misdemeanor. But as you just said, there are circumstances that can change that.
And that's, that is one of the issues that's a challenge with this area is that it is illegal to, for any firearms or projectiles in city limits anywhere. It is legal on Forest Service property or in, within the Forest Service jurisdiction to shoot as long as you are far enough away to do it, consistent with the law. And the opportunities to restrict firearms on Forest Service property are very, very slim. Maybe Chief, you can come up, if you don't mind, for a minute to the microphone. I told him I was just going to turn this whole topic over to him. He thought I was joking. But it's not just a regional decision. There are very strong feelings about this nationally and the Forest Service is very reluctant to change anything like that. So it's, it's, I'm looking at you, but I think it's next, it's next to impossible to the Forest Service to ever say there won't be shooting in that, in that, those areas.
Right. We've had discussions, some in the home discussion, at least twice in a few years, and when it happens, the emotions are high, everyone's concerned, local Forest Service folks.
Are sensitive to that and they'll start talking about maybe some ideas or possibilities of change as soon as it starts to go back east. And to the folks there, it is a mess. And when we think we're making headway, it'll get knocked back. And there's some very strong feelings from special interest groups as well, but Forest Service and it's, yeah, it's very difficult to get something done specific. I wish people, well, I don't wish people knew how difficult it was to get the fire changes. We've been talking about fire changes for years.
Right.
That took a long time. And it's unfortunate to say, had we not had homes destroyed, I don't think we would have got it done this time. It's more about what's happened than it is about what potentially could happen.
In fact, I may, I may add to that. Chief Baskett talked about it too, but, you know, and we were proposing a half mile from any road on the Forest Service property. What we ended up with for restriction of fires, I think, was 200 feet. And the question they kept asking us was, well, what evidence is there that you need a half mile versus 200 feet? We said, well, does, does a, does a fire that destroyed home not count as evidence? But it just did not resonate. Now, that wasn't with our local Forest Service folks, but when we got further along the process. So Tom's right. That was, it took, it took that amount of damage to even get that kind of a concession for fires.
Well, to be honest, the distance from the road is just a deterrent to people. I mean, not that many people are going to hike a quarter mile to light a fire. So it's likely why it didn't resonate, because it's just an arbitrary or a forced thing. Another thing, I think that the Ward Canyon shooting, which is what seems to have caused the incident with the vehicle windshield, could go away if we could just complete the road across the detention. Is there any news to report there? I mean, we'd have people naturally patrol it there if we could just have a road across. Thoughts?
So no movement from the developer, but, but we're working on some potential solutions with the county and with the landowners that we, we hope we can implement soon that might solve that problem sooner rather than later. It's going to take a fair amount of consistent action on everybody's part to keep moving the ball forward. But we're optimistic that there might be some opportunities to complete that road. Commissioner Elliott, I don't know if there's anything you want to add there.
So just real quick, all this kind of wrapping together, what we're doing on the county side. So when we, yeah, so when we had the contract come before us again to renew for the next five years, $7,000 per year, I happily said, tabled it, said, I want to get together with the Forest Service and have a discussion about that because that doesn't cover our, you know, that's like one month of patrols for us going up and back down there. And so I had the regional law enforcement director here that he's over 16 counties. He said, Commissioner, my budget's been cut 35% in the last 10 years. I've gone from 10 officers down to four. So if you want to help me get some more funding from the federal side, you know, go ahead and start helping on that. And I said, I'm more than obliged to call Mitt Romney's office, Chris Stewart's office and all that.
Four officers for how many counties?
16.
Oh, my goodness.
And so he now, like I said, for Davis County, we've got one officer that's for Salt Lake, Twilla and Davis. And so they can't even make headway to come around. And so I said, well, let's work with you on that. We did put a counter up on your road and Farmington Canyon and this canyon to see where traffic's at. Farmington today has about 60,000 vehicles up there. You guys have got about 40,000 vehicles gone up there to date on that road since about April. And so we were kind of getting the count on there to see, you know, what are our numbers going up and down there. When it comes to the transition of the road with Boundless, you know, we've been working, Gary Hill knows that we're working together, trying to figure out how we can tie this road in together. Also, the property owners, how we can, you know, do some other things to make it beautify that area. And so we're working with the landowners on that, working with Gary, you know, on that and just kind of putting together a package that will be appealing to the neighbors slash give us better access and more control, more lighting and everything else, you know, to be there. On the county side of it, you know, talking with our sheriff, you know, how do we do more patrols up there, take more manpower? You know, we run a paramedic program, you know, that we're running around doing a lot of that. And so our times allocated to go up there on the canyon is not as much as we would like. And so we've had discussions with the sheriff and he will bring that forward in the budgets, you know, this next budget this fall of, you know, would it take a couple more? And I've presented that to the, to our legislators as well, Mitt Romney's office and Chris Stewart's office of, look, guys, in order to get, we probably need two to three FTOs to be up there all the time, you know, on Farmington going across and everything else to actually do, do us justice, not be such lawlessness up there. And they just kind of shake their heads of, you know, that's 100,000 plus. I'm like, yeah, that's what it really needs to be in order to do this or you guys step up and actually do your job and patrol your Forest Service property. So we're having those discussions, moving that along. It's a train of thought, but questions?
I've got a couple for you if you don't mind. I know the council is aware of this, but our audience are listening public. I've had the opportunity to, along with Gary Hill, to meet with Commissioner Elliott a couple of times and our congressional staff to think of solutions and ideas and trying to untie the scorey knot that is the B and secondarily Farmington Canyon. And appreciate the time you put into it and the research, especially your sheriff's offices put into it. Congressman Stewart, being, you know, a Davis County local, I think he's probably a little more familiar with, with Farmington Canyon and with the Boundless B. But I'm not sure that, you know, Senator Lee and Senator Romney are. And one of the thoughts I had is, you know, seeing if we can jointly host some type of a field trip for those two and their staffs to fully understand and hear from our residents, hear the things we hear, that we hear up close and personal, that they get to hear at the DC distance. Because I think that might change some of their motivation. So I'm curious as to your thoughts about whether we could jointly help you tell that story better.
That would be great. I've reached out to him about doing that, but another voice to reach out to their offices and say, look, we would like to have you guys out here to see our problems.
The other question I have for you is, is some type of an official letter from, from Boundless City helpful to add to your efforts to document our frustration of our residents and our concerns?
I think that'd be very beneficial. And talking about the shooting restrictions in conversations, we're now having bimonthly meetings I set up with the Forest Service Chief Becky Hoyt's, you know, talking about the fire restrictions, also some other canyon issues that we have, you know, property acquisitions and stuff like that. And so we're going to start having meetings bimonthly to kind of start checking off the list of things that we've got. The shooting restrictions, it's not, it's hard. She's mentioned that it'll take probably two to three year process. You got to get local buy-in from the local lobbying groups that are, you know, it's not like we're trying to restrict it. We're just saying, let's go up the mountain a little bit more to those areas, not so close to the foothills. And so we're going to lay out a strategy of how we can go about doing that. It's, they've been successful in Utah County and some other areas of Utah County. They've been able to do it in Alpine and some of those other areas. And so it is doable, but it takes, it took her about three years in order to get that accomplished. So it takes time. But like I said, we have to get our local lobbying groups, NRA and others in line to saying, you know, this is what we're looking at doing. We're not trying to restrict gun rights. We're just, you know, there's a proper place to go do the shooting.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Anything, Richard and Lloyd?
Thanks, Ray.
Randy, we really appreciate you for those on the council who don't know. He's been engaged with the B for now a number of years.
Yep.
And been with those residents and so forth. And you don't live here and it's very much appreciated, Commissioner, that you've been engaged and you recognize that that's one of those key hotspots in our city. So thanks for all, thanks for all your help. Eventually we'll, eventually here will, we will make, we will make some progress. And I see that you stepped in, Commissioner Kamala. Thank you for being here.
Lorraine Kamaloo from the county. Sure appreciate every one of you. And the 200 feet thing versus the half mile thing, when it came to fire, there was a good discussion about, that people can't visualize necessarily 200 feet. Remember I talked about, I can at least visualize 100 yards because of a football field. But otherwise, how do people really even know? And so we were asking for the half mile. Yeah. So anyway, talking about distance, that's kind of where that all landed.
We could have said to everyone out there, pretty much up to this elevation, can't have five. Once they got to the elevation where they really need to want. And I think that's easier for people to understand than 200 feet. Trying to explain where that is, even the long course of time or distance unless you have evidence of the bar. So this is a big change. It's very positive. It's been a lot of conversation. But I think getting it to a place where people coming into our handles will recognize that we can't do that.
Yeah, it is. Anyway, I don't think I have anything else. Commissioner Elliott's been doing a great job, but we, we certainly share your, your pain and the need to get it figured out. So all three commissioners will do all that we can.
It's complicated.
Yeah, well, it's taking a lot of years and seemingly, you know, difficult progress. So I think there's some good ideas. I sure hope we can get that progress.
Thank you. Thanks, Lauren. Back to you.
Maybe a question for the commissioners. I know that we're talking about an interlocal agreement relative to Eagle Ridge Drive. Do, do you have that on an agenda? Do you have any idea when we might see that on the agenda? We've been talking about it, I think, for two months or three months now.
Yeah, that's a great question. That's probably in Commissioner Stevenson's portfolio with community and economic development. I have not heard any update myself about that. So, yeah, maybe reach out to him tomorrow. Uh huh. Yeah. I know the last that I heard was a while ago about the potential for what a development and a road that could go in and the county contributing. Is that the one you're talking about? Yes. Yeah. I mean, I, I thought it sounded so promising and I think you heard my interest in that. So if you haven't heard for a little while, yeah, check with Kent Anderson, the Director of that Community and Economic Development Department. And then that is Commissioner Stevenson's portfolio and kind of see where that's at. We had a meeting today and it wasn't on today. And I don't know where that discussion's at.
So the mayor and I have a meeting with Kent, Jeff and Commissioner Stevenson on Friday. I guess, would it be appropriate after that meeting to maybe just share with the other two of you, you know, where we're at on that?
And if you do that individually, then we can each hear everything from you. You know, it could be in a work session, but then you'd have to wait for whatever Tuesday you get on. So either way.
Okay.
Get it on another work session and share all to all of us or individually would be, I'd be fine with that. And just our office can help you to schedule whatever times work for you and us.
And I do, yeah, you're both very generous with your time. I, I very much appreciate it. I know we do too. It's helpful to know that the ball is sort of, sort of in Commissioner Stevenson's court. And since we're going to meet with him on Friday, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll let you know how that goes.
Anywhere that's at.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, Lauren. Jerry?
I don't have anything else unless there are questions or conversation that the council wants to have on this topic at this point. We, you know, our priorities, maybe I'll just finish with our priorities. We're continuing to work, as you've heard with the county, on the local agreement about construction of Eagle Ridge Drive. We're continuing to work with the county on the parking lot issues that will alleviate, both of those will alleviate a lot of the concerns and work, the base of the Ward Canyon area. Those are our big priorities right now. We're having ongoing conversations with the congressional delegation about funding with the county, which, as you heard, is really tough to squeeze blood out of a turnip. I think it's going to take a lot bigger push than Davis County and Boundless to get the federal government to fund the Forest Service like it ought to be funded.
And so we had a conversation with them on a course and public lands. This is not an issue that's just solely our problem. It's a, it's a regional Western type issue with the law enforcement restrictions, a less law enforcement, everything else. And so we will, I'm working with their lobbyists and on the national side of that as well to see if we can run some legislation and some bill files and getting our western delegation to realize that this is an issue that's not just Davis County issue, but all counties in the West. So it's one thing we'll push into.
Thank you.
You don't have commissioners who are shy, apparently. But I just want to say too, because there could be people here who are, who live in this area that I, before I took office, but I had one primary, I was invited to go up to a big giant meeting that was held up there by the B where it was very well organized and very well attended and everything was spelled out and we could see the problem. And I'm, you know, I'm somewhat familiar with that area, but became even more deeply informed about how, how hard it is and really what you're dealing with. So I'm just really glad that the citizens themselves have, have been working to inform everyone. And I did experience that and see it for myself too. It is very tricky.
Thanks, Lauren.
Mayor, could I make one more comment? Please. I don't mean to be a broken record, but I know that our police officers patrol Boundless Boulevard down to Fort Worth. They patrol that neighborhood that they're just below the B. If the road was connected, and in my mind, almost all of our problems with shooting that need to be solved right now are in Ward Canyon. I mean, that's the, that's the closest proximity. It's also the easiest to solve if we have access from our police officers. If the chief sends an officer up there to patrol, now they've got to park in the lot, get out of their car, walk down the road to the detention base where the shooting's going on, rather than just driving by on the road. And just the presence of other members of the public driving back and forth on that road, I think pushes that problem up on the hill where it's not as much of a problem. So again, the other processes that we're involved with or that partners are involved with sound like they're lengthy. But if there's some way that we can figure out to get that access built, I think that solves the most critical of our problems. So.
We just, the youth council just painted it two weeks ago, actually.
Absolutely. The national battles are huge and long. City and county, if we can't come together to do something to fix that road, we have to have access back and forth. That will help the B. That will help the residents see something change for the positive. And we're not talking about millions and millions of dollars for the rest of these.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chief. Thanks. So maybe a segue, maybe a segue into your next one, which is the wind, is that, you know, I think we have a congressional delegation that wants the help. Sometimes it's hard for them on Friday. I did take a call from Senator Romney and spoke with him for about 20 minutes on the phone about the wind. And he was very concerned about what had happened here. He also told me he has a house in Holiday and there, there, there was no one at home. And he had no electricity for four days and everything in their freezer spoiled. So the other things, they have things happen to them too. So he, I was, I was able to convey to him the, how this community comes together in an emergency and how, and how things, how things proceeded. So he was, as he said, he kind of expects that from Boundless. He used the word, I kind of expect that from Boundless. So he did ask, he said, you're, you're probably going to have other things that I might be able to help with. And I told him that I was sure that there were. So we'll, maybe we can, besides the wind, maybe we can get his help. Although I think Chris Stewart has his connections directly with this kind of thing. He said, has maybe more than he wants. Gary, back to you.
Thank you, Francisco. If you want to bring up that, please. Thank you. Francisco, if you want to bring up that presentation, um, I want to make sure I leave time for, for questions or, or comments. So I'm going to try and go fast, but I, I could spend hours on how impressive the response was from our community. And I want to paint, if I can, a bit of a picture of what happened. Forecast, we all were watching the forecast. We had two department heads. Our power department director, Alan Johnson, and our police chief, Chief Ross, both come home early from vacations in anticipation of the storm. I got a phone call at six thirty in the morning that the police department had because of the damage, it opened up our emergency operations center, which is sort of the call to arms for staff to gather and put all of the department heads together and began to work the problem. By the time I arrived at six forty-five, um, we had, in addition to all the department heads that were gathering there, next door, we had our volunteer emergency response team already set up. That was with ham radio capability and direct communication with our twelve emergency districts. Bountiful's divided into twelve emergency districts. We were already receiving many, many phone calls through dispatch, through the, the, the power department Porsche system was overrun already. Um, and of course, we know that the, that the system, that the, the situation went on much for many more hours, the windstorm. In those first few hours, the response was limited to trying to understand the scope of the problem. We had power department employees that were out attempting to fix things, but so many other things were falling apart and, and coming apart because of trees on, on power lines that there, there wasn't much, it was much easier to fix, as Alan said, after the wind stopped than during the wind was blowing. Our streets department and police departments were out, um, clearing the road, responding to calls for fire, uh, other things like that. It was kind of chaotic the first few hours of the response. But within two hours or so, we recognized that there were some critical decisions we needed to make. One was we knew that as soon as the wind stopped, our awesome residents were going to start, um, collecting wood and need a place to take it. If people remember from the two thousand eleven windstorm, the, we had the landfill open and we made, we made the decision then, um, to open the landfill. But lines were so long so quickly that other sites had to be opened up. So we made a decision pretty quickly to open up ten different sites in, in the city that residents could drop, um, could drop branches off that. And then on top of that, what we did is we used our emergency response team and we called the districts and we said, please find ten locations or so for us and can you staff those locations from eight in the morning till eight at night for two weeks? And that was all done by our emergency districts. Shortly after, uh, we started the response as well, um, Alan Johnson was on the phone with our partner cities, power partner cities. In fact, it was really the entire morning trying to get resources here for the city. Francisco, I can't see what slide we're on. Can you go to the next slide? Some of the stats that, that we can share, um, we replaced forty-nine power poles. There are three more that are stable but need to be replaced. To give you a comparison, over the course of an entire year, we replaced about a hundred and ten. And so this was in five days, we replaced forty-nine. We had eight thousand feet of overhead wire that needed to be replaced. I think it was forty-six hundred man hours, not sixty-six, but it could have been sixty. Yeah, about five thousand, and it was a typo on my part. They were regularly working eighteen hours days. In some cases, it was twenty-two hour days for some of our own folks. And we had ninety-two people total working the storm. You can see the list behind me of the agencies that responded to our help and sent manpower and equipment for the duration of the storm. Uh, it was, it was incredible. You know, and as Alan pointed out today, the windstorm started in Idaho. And so the resources were stretched thin. We had other partner cities that needed resources as well. But those that came and stayed with us for the duration, we just can't, we can't thank them enough for the amount of work that they did. After those first few hours of transit, of, of basically trying to sort out the problem and then decide, and then trying to create safe travel lanes and things like that, the, the response went almost full power to the power department, trying to put people back into power. It's very difficult to say how many homes we had out of power, but I think Alan said best that there was no area of town that did not have power outages. In two thousand eleven, we had a couple of transmission lines that went down. And in a way, that's better than what happened this year because when you fix a transmission line, you immediately put a lot of people back in power. In this case, we had a lot of service lines and, um, distribution lines. And so you're talking about a lot of work to put small clumps of home together. We also saw, it was, I think, pretty universally agreed that the amount of debris and the number of trees that fell were greater in this storm than in two thousand eleven. We, we assume because leaves were on the trees and, uh, and the ground was still being watered. And so we lost a lot of trees that didn't come down then. But a huge, but a huge difficult task in front of our power department. With debris assistance, um, we had, we did the same thing. We followed Alan's lead and started and got on the phone with some of our friends in other cities and had, um, vehicles and manpower from a number of cities behind us, as well as some residents who just stopped what they were doing with their own personal work and, and volunteered vehicles and manpower. It was, it was extremely impressive and, and essentially what we did is we, we had these ten sites. There really weren't any residents that were further than five minutes away from a location to drop, um, limbs. And our focus was on getting the debris from there to the landfill. And so we used our vault, our help from the other cities to continually load trucks and just keep that moving to the landfill so that, that none of the ten sites got over full. That went on for six or seven straight days continually. Some of the folks like from Park City were here from Wednesday through, I believe they were here through Monday. Two trucks, two people. Saratoga Springs sent nine drivers, nine trucks. We had, I, I, I mean, it would be, again, the response from the other cities was amazing. And, uh, in one case, I, I called my friend of mine, city manager in Saratoga Springs, and I, I called him to see if he could provide help. Before I had a chance to call anybody else in Utah County, he texted the other managers in Utah County. And I was getting phone calls from them saying, we're coming, we're on our way. I just can't say enough about, you know, the city level of government. Um, we just have great partnerships with people. Do you want to click to the next one? So some of the debris stats, we had those ten collection sites plus the landfills I mentioned. There were no lines even at the landfill. I think the longest lines at the landfill occasionally went out to the gate. But we had a volun, we had an employee at the landfill whose job, she stood for hours on end at the gate, just directing traffic. That was Trudy and, and she was one of many, many people who just spent hours keeping the process going. I can't remember who, who said it, uh, if it was you, Richard, that said about your back?
Yeah. I'll be happy to repeat it.
Would you?
Yeah. I didn't appreciate the remote drop sites because the long trip to the landfill was recovery time for me in the past. So you made me a lot sore this time by having those remote locations. By the way, your person at the landfill was pleasant all day long, every day. It was awesome. And the people who were there monitoring the remote sites, just, you can't say enough about people.
No, you can't.
And the fact that folks were feeding those sites at a rate that they were keeping busy, all of that heavy equipment moving to the landfill is also incredible. It was a Herculean effort.
It was amazing. You know, the biggest challenge that you face as a city with a coordinated event is coordinating the volunteer community efforts with the city efforts. That, that's the single biggest challenge. And, and, um, I want to say that, you know, we've, something we've tried to make as a priority as a council. One of your policy priorities was, you know, um, emergency response. And so we've worked basically eight years to try and connect our emergency districts with our city response and our volunteer. And, um, it, it was, it was really overwhelmingly successful.
That cert training, those cert folks that, uh, when I got my cert training, those, I think, I, I understand they really helped a lot, so.
So that was one of the things that we, amazing. So let me tell you about the volunteer, um, the EOC, if I can, just a little bit. Francisco, aren't you? Let's see.
Before you go there, Gary, can I share a compliment from Governor Herbert about our dump sites and our volunteers? Councilwoman Barr and Councilwoman Harris, and I had the opportunity to meet the governor and thank the National Guard, um, for their assistance. And the governor had, I think, an interesting comment to us about, um, one, how, how put back together Bountiful looked compared to he'd just come from Torrey Rose Park that had not made quite as much progress as, as we had made. And he credited, um, both our, our community for jumping to, with helping neighbors, helping neighbors. And then, um, quite frankly, the, the brilliant move to do the remote dump sites. But that was not happening in, in Salt Lake and in this Rose Park neighborhood in particular. And it was, it was making things so much easier for residents. And so he, he noted that and shared that with us, that he thought that was something we should, um, in some type of a postmortem analysis we share with our sister cities that we make sure they're aware of it when this happens again, um, that, that we share that this is a success tip, because he was, he very much noted that to us.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a key decision that was made early and, and I think it was made, we, we talked about different ideas. It was, I, I don't recall whose idea it was. It was kind of a function of all the department heads talking about what would be the best thing to do. And then the ability to just turn to the emergency districts and say, can you staff it and give a space is just remarkable. I mean, it's remarkable. Our volunteers next door, one of the things we found out too, thanks to Alan, is he warned us that we were going to start getting many, many angry phone calls. And, and people in an emergency want to talk to a person, not to, not leave a message. And so we were able to turn to our emergency response team and they reached out to the cert volunteers and others. And they staffed a call center that allowed everybody to call in and speak to a live person, basically from seven in the morning till nine at night for five days. And, uh, right next to the emergency operations center. Now, they were taking, they were taking issues and, uh, you know, at first that wasn't extremely helpful because we had so much information coming from different places. But the ability that people had to talk to a person was, was really helpful. But another thing that that group did that they weren't asked to do is when the call volume went down, those volunteers started calling people back that had special needs, medical needs, other emergency needs, to see if those needs had been met, um, just of their own volition. You know, it's, it's that kind of extra effort that we saw over and over from everybody at every level in this response that was so touching. We had ham, uh, ham radio volunteers that were at each of the dump sites as well to try and help us coordinate equipment and vehicles. It, it's just, uh, it's hard for me to put into words. I, I think our last day in the EOC, as we talked around, a few of us got a little choked up just seeing the scope and the amount of, the amount of help that we received from all levels. I, I just, you can't possibly thank the, the employees, the volunteers, the other cities, the emergency districts. I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Shawna, who was in the EOC with us the whole time. I think we, we did a much better job this time of putting information out to the public. We had a single source. Any information that maybe put it out was cool, put out, put it, put out was, um, coordinated in the EOC and then was sent out by Sean on a very obvious windstorm update channel. Um, we tried to do that a couple of times a day to give residents information that was on all of our social media. Peoples seemed to be very grateful for that, but it, it kept, um, it kept each department from having to do them on their, on their own. Uh, we needed to feed ninety volunteers on the power side and fifty volunteers on the, I mean, other, not volunteers, but folks, um, on the street side. We turned that over to Galen and Shannon, who just made all the arrangements. Alan Johnson made arrangements for lodging for the people that were here. You know, the list just kind of goes on and on. Um, I'll stop now and see if there are questions.
Any questions from the council?
The pickup, Millie, did you have something? Pickup of the, uh, remaining large stumps, things that people, normal folks don't have the equipment to move. What's the timeline for that?
Well, at this point, we are still encouraging everyone to do anything they, they can on their own. Each of the districts has heavy equipment in it that can help out with that, if they will. The further away we get from the initial response, the harder it is for people to dedicate that kind of time.
Sure.
Our plan is to go through the city. Now, we've, we've identified twenty-five areas that have major, um, curb gutter sidewalk problems. Primary, usually as a result of a huge root ball coming up and ripping all that stuff up. So we're going to just have to evaluate how and when we can get to those, um, those root balls and things, provided they're not creating a safety hazard. It, it may take, it may take some period of time.
Okay.
At the same time that, um, this was happening, then they, the Navajo Nation had all of the, uh, the ask for semis full of wood, though they can burn it this winter. So, um, they did get the, they did get the, uh, the blessing of a lot of wood that was down.
I was told Centerville Woods Cross and Bountiful provided thirteen semi-loads of.
Thirteen semi-loads of, of, uh,
Wood to the Navajo Nation.
Yeah. Yeah, for the Navajo Nation. So that was pretty amazing that they did that.
Yeah.
And, and did you have a comment?
I, I just, to saying a simple thank you seems trite, but it's just been humbling in, in the best sense of the word just to see how Bountiful has rallied and the neighbors who have helped. And it, it was interesting for those five days, all of the political strike, for the most part, seemed to go away because we were all united in one cause and it was simply neighbor helping neighbor. So it was, I was very proud to be a part of Bountiful and to just witness all the good that was happening in such a hard situation. So we had, we had neighbors giving space heaters and we all have wonderful heartwarming stories. So thank you very much to the, to the city and the city staff for all of their efforts and the police and just everybody. Thank you.
Well, well said. Millie, uh, Kendall, and do you have, I think everybody's had a chance to say something.
Thank you. I, I was so grateful. Yeah, I, I think that the city, um, the staff that comes together, that has to kind of, um, be responsible at times like that and have kind of an immediate response and give a plan for the community. It's, it's those times when you draw on the preparation that you've had for months and years. And so I just think that, um, I applaud the staff for learning the lessons from the past and implementing innovative things to try to, um, handle it even more effectively than we ever have before. And, um, you know, we just can't do everything, but it's amazing with partnership with the residents and with good leadership and the staff. All of your extra hours and your time. And Alan, I'm sure people have been yelling at you that their power didn't get on in a timely fashion or whatever. But I am sure that, I have no doubt that, um, they, it was, they were in better shape than they would have been, um, in others, you know, with other companies and with the help that you brought in from other cities. And I mean, it just, you were doing everything you could. So to all the department heads and to our leadership at City Hall, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we appreciate Gary Hill. Thanks, uh, commissioners for coming. And we'll, we'll now take a, a little minute break until seven o'clock.